So.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining. Motion carries. Give me a second to connect it to our wifi and then we'll go on.
Yeah, I know. Nobody answered.
No, no, no. I realized I couldn't text you and tell you.
My internets are not working.
Your internets?
We have a, one of our presenters came in and because we have multiple SSIDs, she was referring him to as the internets. Which internets should I connect to? I know. Is this the one that you were using?
Yeah.
Okay. You'll see, you'll laugh at what I'm doing. Because I go, I have my own DNS server as well. So yes, I have to make sure I remove myself from my DNS server. Yes. Probably forgot about that.
Julie, I think he's giving me a hard time about sixty five because the temperature is in my office.
It is cold. Do we have, are you trying to keep things costs down? Well, if you want to pump heat from the, from the Bitcoin computers at the code, at the power plant and then heat can get heat from there. Oh, my God. So the dad that's leading the charge against that. So we'll stand for saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. No resident comments tonight. There's no one signed up. I call for motion to accept the consensus agenda items as submitted. I'll second it. Anything to separate or to discuss? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. All right, call for motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. Any items separated and discussed? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye. Post abstaining. Motion carries. We have some fundraising stuff as a external communication to the board. Ex-official students members report. We need more mics, by the way.
Two more.
All right. Firstly, I would like to say that spring sports has started three weeks back, but now all games and meets and have started recently this week. The NWHS music program is doing a drive through on Tuesday, May seventeenth during the budget vote. And they're going to pre-sale tickets, but all those details are still being figured out right now.
It's great.
Excellent. Any questions of our student on her report? All right. Okay. Presence report, I'll move on to superintendent.
Thank you. First, as probably many of you know, the state budget still needs to be acted on. The last I heard, they're expecting action in the vote tomorrow. We'll see if that happens. If not, they're gonna have to make some decisions about payroll and things like that that impact state workers in the short term if they don't get a resolution here quickly. So there's a number of items that seem to be holding up. You can certainly agree about that on your own, but I just wanted to let you know that hasn't been approved yet. As far as tonight, under new, we have one item under new business and then we know there's two other things that we'll talk about during our budget presentation tonight that then we'll need board action. One is the expenditure budget and the second is the tax law. So we'll make sure that we remember those two items. The are there any questions about the weapons detection system? Because I know we brought it up, we talked about it, it's an action item. If you have any questions, maybe be a good time.
How, when do you think you can get it installed?
It all depends on how, so what we're really looking at is being able to put it into our current capital project. And if we can do that, that should, that should help us. We expect to be able to do that with some of the, where some of the contingency monies are. So if we do that, hopefully, at the beginning of next school year, that's what will be the target. Next, still on the line of safety. I said this before the event, not having any idea how many people would actually participate. We had seventy, approximately seventy first responders who took time out of their lives and really their entire day to spend with us to go through safety drills. As you know, we had active shooter drills in two of our, at two of our schools. We started with Colonial Village. We then moved over to Tuscaloosa. The police, fire, ambulance, it's just incredible the amount of work that they put in ahead of time. But the fact that they were there the entire day with us, we went through, after the drills, we then did what they refer to in their language as like hot wash. We walked through that. We were able to, you know, learn some things certainly from it. They learned some things from it. It's the reason we do these drills and then hope to never have to really do it. If, if, if you wonder how much, you know, people care, how much they care about kids, remember, a lot of those people are volunteers to begin with. They left work in some cases to be with us on that day because they thought that was that important. I mean, quite frankly, I was a bit overwhelmed whenever I saw them all in our, in our transportation lot. You know, we knew we were going to have some, but that number was, was actually just, it was awesome. It was awesome. So we've sent letters to all of them, thanking them for the time and the energy and the effort. It all goes to making us just a little bit safer and so on behalf of the district, I think. See, I did talk about these events at the last meeting, but I just want to reinforce because they're coming soon. On April thirtieth, we have the Eco Campus Revitalization Project here from eight to eleven AM in the morning. We then have the suicide prevention walk right afterwards. Actually, it's overlapping a little bit, right? Think like ten thirty, oh, eleven thirty, okay. Okay, so it'll take place right after the event here as well. And on May twentieth, we have our elementary movie night. That'll be outdoors, weather permitting. If not, we'll move it into the auditorium and that'll be May twentieth, eight forty-five PM. Because if it's outside, obviously, it's dark first. And as, as all of you know, we have food, both breakfast and lunch for all students until the end of the year. No action has been taken to extend that, but as of right now, that'll be placed into the end of the school year.
Any questions to the superintendent? All right. Moving on to reports to the board. Our finance report.
Okay. Again, a lot of this stuff is redundant. We've seen it before. We'll walk through it and we'll stop on a few of the slides. As you, as you know, New York State's budget this year was better than I've ever seen from a governor. So the most important part of that is that last bullet that they've put together a budget that's projected to be balanced through twenty twenty seven, which is really important. Okay, I would never seen that before either. The, we put this slide up here just so you realize that education, public education in New York State is something that thank goodness people care a lot about. And you can see that it is a significant part of the total revenue or expenditure pie, but it's their revenues, right? As far as foundation aid is concerned, to make this slide simple, every district in New York State was guaranteed no less than three percent this school year. Our district is receiving four percent in foundation aid. Okay, that's because in the, this upcoming school year, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, they're going to completely close the foundation aid gap. And four percent, four percent for our district gets us there to close that gap.
And then this just again reviews the foundation aid increases and the projected increases to get all the districts at where they should be and what that looks like. This is just again going through a refoundation aid history. When it was created in two thousand and seven, then it was frozen in two thousand and nine, then they instituted a gap elimination adjustment where they reduced actually funds from the foundation aid, instituted the property tax cap law. GEA was then fully restored. And in twenty twenty, there was no foundation aid increase. And in twenty-one, twenty, actually, it was increased and then taken away with the pandemic adjustment. And then twenty-one, twenty-two was increased with the promise of the three-year phase in, which is what we're looking at for next year to start.
And just to add, my, my hope would be that with the balance budget till twenty twenty-seven, you won't see another GEA. Right?
This is again just showing how neither wheat field is calculated to get their extra four percent. So it's taking the prior year foundation aid base and subtracting it from what the formula was to come up with a difference. And then half of that is the nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars versus the base times three percent, which would be the minimum any district would receive. So we're getting the higher of the two.
Just to reiterate, we're getting the higher of the two because we're not receiving the full foundation.
Okay, and then this again just shows the foundation aid before the phase in what the foundation aid twenty twenty-two was, what the foundation, I'm sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three is estimated to be what the twenty-one, twenty-two was last year. And then the method of increase was the five, the phasing amount and the difference between the two is the, is half of what we're owed to become fully funded.
And then this slide here, you can't see all the numbers, but it, what it shows is what we should have been paid in foundation for all these years. We know that we haven't been paid it. Again, the gap should be completely closed in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, and then this is just again a review of our tax cap levy. This is the first one, so we want to know the second one. Thank you. Again, taking the prior year property tax levy, multiplying it by a tax-based growth factor, which is provided by New York State, adding in the base year pilot agreements and subtracting out any capital expenditures net of aid. And then multiplying that by an allowable levy growth factor based on CPI, subtracting from that any pilot receivables we expect in the forthcoming year and adding in any carryover to come up with a levy limit before exclusions. Our district is entitled to some exclusions based on capital expenditures. So we can add another over, just over one point four million to that. So our levy limit plus exclusions is that bottom number there, thirty-five million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars or two point five seven percent over prior year. And then again, this just shows the levy amounts that were in place for the past five years and the percent increase over prior year for those amounts.
And you can see down at the bottom, the one point six seven percent is that five-year average.
It's kind of included this year.
Correct, correct. You got it.
And then this graph just shows the budget amounts over the last five years again and the percent increase or decrease from prior year. So those are all increased budget amounts.
Oops.
Point seven six.
So that, that's the expenditure, that's the expenditure, proposed expenditure budget increase should you vote on the expenditure budget that we're presenting.
Okay, and then this is just showing what, how the revenues are budgeted for next year. The levy, that levy is shown at the maximum, the, the
Two point five seven.
Two point five seven, sorry. And then payment and move taxes out of pilots, interest and penalty and, you know, just reading down some of the items. And then on the right-hand side there, you see the state foundation aid at the top and building aid expected and public and private access cost aid all the way down, impact aid. You see there, we have budgeted at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars expected next year. And then toward the bottom, the reserves and fund balance, appropriated fund balance to balance the budget. And then inter-fund transfer line is the Greenway money to be appropriated for that specific bond, the Greenway bond. And you can see that we have appropriated fund balance in the amount of two million, four, four thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. We're utilizing capital transportation reserves by buses of eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Capital technology reserve money, that eight hundred thousand dollars is going to be used to purchase technology equipment for classrooms and students. And then the rest, the ERS, the TRS retirement reserves will be used to balance all the remaining amount.
So, so important and analysis of this, if, if you look at the real property tax, that's with a two point five seven. If the board elects to go any number below that, obviously, that number would drop, that revenue number would drop there. And then if we keep the expenditure budget in place, what you would be, what we'd be looking at is appropriating additional dollars. Okay, that's how we'd be balanced. So we'll show you that in a minute, but is there any question on that? Understands that, okay. Go ahead.
And then this just again shows the expenditure budget that's budgeted for next year, the revenue budget, and then the amount needed to balance.
Can you just go back one second?
Yep, absolutely. Last year, the amount that we budgeted, that we that we grew, it was higher than that three million, okay? That we so it was high.
And I just want to say that revenue budget number includes the capital reserve amounts because that's money we have. So it's not really necessarily to balance budgets, it's offsetting expenditures that we're proposing in the budget.
So if you look here, the number at the, at the top is we, it shows you the levy with two point five seven percent. It equates to an eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollar increase, okay? You can see that number then repeated again down under levy increase percent, two point five seven. And prior year levy, if you can see the amount of increase over levy, that number is the same. The numbers below are if, if the board elects to go the number lower. So if it's two point four nine percent, you can see what the number is, it's two percent, if it's one point nine nine, if it's one point seven five, four point five. You can see all those numbers right there. Okay? So i- if you'd like, we know, go ahead.
So the way I understand that, that the difference between, we'll say, two point five seven and one point nine nine is, say, two hundred thousand?
That's correct.
I'm probably coming in.
Of money that we would end up appropriating, keeping the expenditure budget, we end up appropriating about two hundred thousand dollars. Now, what I was gonna say, well, if you want, what we'll do, what's your, we'll finish the rest of the presentation. And then for, for you, when you're talking this through, we can bring these numbers back up and of course produce whatever other numbers you like. This just shows the TRS rates, teacher retirement system rates, this is what the district pays in the teacher retirement. You can see that that's went from nine point five three to next year, it's gone up a little bit to ten point two nine. The ERS is actually going down. Backing up to TRS, if you remember the teacher retirement system, this was one that we didn't have a reserve for for a long time and now we're allowed to and we do. So when we do see big fluctuations, we are able to appropriate more dollars from this if we need to in a year when there's a, there's a big jump. Okay? There's the ERS is going down, that's good news. Reserve funds.
So again, this is just going over what reserves we've had, we had in place at the end of the twenty twenty-one school year that were audited. We have workers' compensation reserve at just over one point one million. ERS reserve at over one point seven million, we have a TRS reserve at five hundred and seventy-nine thousand plus. We have other employee benefits reserve at nine hundred and thirty-one thousand plus. We have capital transportation reserve from two thousand and eighteen. That is now full and there's one point six million plus remaining in that. We have a twenty twenty-one capital transportation reserve that was up to two million, that is full and that's two million dollars, that's supposed to be three million dollars, I'm sorry, three million dollars. And then we have capital improvements reserve at six million dollars, that's full. That's at four, four point three million, just over four point three million dollars left. We have capital technology reserve at two million dollars, that was full and that's at two million, so. An appropriated fund balance, that's the amount that was appropriated in the current year budget. So that's at just over two point two million. We have an assigned unappropriated fund balance, which is the money that is now going to be on the budget vote to appropriate to a capital reserve for projects. And that's just over five point nine million. And then we have our four percent unassigned fund balance at just over three point one million, which is basically what we use to balance, you know, our cash flow.
Did you hear that? Wait, did everybody hear that? I just, I just Okay, so if, if we look at the, the second one from the right on the bottom, the four percent on the side of that. I just reminded everybody all the time, remember, that's all we're allowed to put in that fund. Okay, we're not allowed to carry a fund balance of over four percent in our aside fund balance. We believe that we should, particularly because of some of the liabilities that may be out there, but we're not allowed. Municipalities do not have that. And, and this slide here, really important, it shows where the district was with the fiscal stress and it shows where the district is now with fiscal stress. Having those reserves allows us to do a lot of the work that we do without paying interest on it, particularly when it comes to capital project work. So it's a, it's a really smart way of doing business to, you know, save the district money when we have those reserves to pay for.
Also prevents levy for those increases or for those amounts as well, because we have them in a savings reserve.
Questions? General questions first or, you know? Okay, so, so the question is, if we, if you go with less than the two point five seven percent, where's that money going to come from? And go ahead.
It could come from one of our reserves. We could appropriate money from a workers' comp reserve. Depending on how low you go, you know, I have to make sure that those expenditures would satisfy the amount that we're, that we actually have that amount of expenditures. It could come from unappropriate fund balance and we could just appropriate more. There, there's a few places it could come from.
You can use multiple funds?
Correct, and that's usually what we would do, right? You'd pull from the ones that you're able to, you would put a little bit more in for each one. You got it. Can I go faster? You mean this one?
Budget?
Yep. It was, it, it was larger than this year's number.
It was the money we appropriated for this current year is, is more than what we're anticipating to appropriate for next year. Yes.
So that's like nine hundred and almost fifty thousand dollars for foundation aid. Is more fully funded.
So the question is, how much more are we getting? They actually, it's this one here because correct.
Twenty nine.
Correct, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And then the expectation will be that it will be this similar, close to same amount of the following year.
I was gonna say, would that not more than make up for the increase in the expenditure budget?
Well, I mean, so the expenditure budget, right? What, what you're doing is you're rolling over all the increases that are built in your expenditure budget. And which a lot of that, of course, is full districts is, is people, right? So contracts, about seventy percent of our costs are, are those, those increases. So knowing that, that percent, about four percent is about, what? It's about, it's a, it's a little less, it's a little more than a quarter of our overall budget, right? But not a third.
I guess it's the nine hundred and fifty, just like one point something percent of our current seventy-nine million dollar budget, right?
Correct.
But I understand that, that, that increase was what allowed me to appropriate less in the appropriated fund balance amount. That's why we're able to appropriate less because we're getting more in foundation aid. So if the levy, if you decide to go for a lower mile, which is fine, you know, we would just appropriate more from the unappropriated. We have, we do have the ability to do that.
Yeah, now get back to the nine hundred thousand roughly. Is that the next two years or three years?
Two.
Two, two. So they they started a three-year phase in, which twenty-one, twenty-two, first year of that phase. And what they did is they took the last two years and cut the difference in half, give it half each year.
The tax gap levy, the limit, that's based on the year before's tax levy?
Correct.
Years would affect next years.
Correct.
Okay. Depending where we are. Sets our max, I guess, for the next year.
That's correct, in other words, you know, you 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 can have a little bit, but you can, you know, you really, there's money that you just don't get back if you if you don't tax it, right? But of course, you still, there's a fiscal responsibility to the to the families and, you know, and to the district. You want us to leave this slide up?
This is the point where we have to decide which direction we're going. You have to decide, set a limit. Now, I I do have one question, of course, this could change based upon, I mean, not that are those numbers, but if also the foundation or funding changes from our budget. This could be thrown out, and you have to see different numbers.
Well, this wouldn't change.
Not this, not this, I'm saying the.
Appropriated fund balance not will change.
Yes, which would affect what your, our thoughts are with this too, that's what's coming.
It's assuming the budget, he knows about those too.
Right. Yeah, but you, we've seen strange things come out of Albany.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I understand.
So I I mean, that's if if, you know, we just have to take that into consideration though, right now, that there could be some changes come next meeting that we'd have to make, you know, if you said something like.
Yeah, can we just say the board's willing to pick a number? But if that changes, we can revisit it, right?
You could, here's here, here's what would happen, so if you if you act on it, and then we start to kind of put all the wheels in motion, we start, you know, we put it out to we get a newsletter, and we get all those things going, right, once those things get going, so he- he- here's what I think. This is my recommendation. You put out a number that you think is is appropriate, and then if there's, if for some reason they added, which I would be shocked, but they could, if they added to our foundation amount this year, and it went up. I think what we should probably do is pull back a little bit on what we're appropriating. So whatever that difference is, because we've been, we've appropriated a lot for a lot of years, and we've, quite frankly, we've needed to do that to make this work. But it's a number that, you know, it's it's less comfortable, and if you shoot out far enough with appropriations, at some point, there's a cliff, and you know, we we had, where Tim's come in, he talked a little about that, we're in we're in a really good place because of our reserves, that we would be able to stem most tides, right? But, you know, I think if if we were, if they did bump that up, wouldn't, wouldn't, but if they did, I think that what maybe the prudent thing to do would be to pull back a little bit on what what you're appropriating, because remember, if we're not appropriating as much, then next year, you can always decide, geez, we did, did we need as much, we can appropriate more. But we gotta get that appropriated number down, that our appropriated numbers are a little high. So we're trying to bring it down just a little bit this year, with the hope that over the years, we can and we keep moving that down a little bit, because, you know, if if you talk to people who talk about long-term budget planning, they'll always talk about, I use the term already, a cliff that you build. And the good news is this, almost every year, except last year, when we appropriated money, we've been able to, we haven't had to utilize much of that money at all. What what we've had was surpluses that built that back, because we, during the year, were talking about spending. But once you start spending it, you know, if you spend an extra million dollars a year that you don't have, you're taking that out of your savings. So that, it's just something that we we want to be, you know, careful of.
Dan, how much, what, what was that number, do you know? What we spent out of the appropriations?
Like, oh, this past year?
Last, this past year?
Well, what do we, what do we appropriate out of it?
Oh, what do we appropriate?
We we'd have to, I I, off the top of my head, I don't know, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, you.
Go back a couple slides.
It might, it might be.
So I want, I think, okay, so we're we're budgeting two, just over two million appropriated, I believe, I think they go four week, I think it was two point four last year in this year, two point three or two point four, yeah, something like that.
Or it's down like four hundred.
Oh, so I, we'll go back to the 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 point where we need to see where we all feel comfortable with a number that goes out right now, then for for the district.
My questions. So the incorporated amount of the ERS is seven hundred thousand, what was it last year? And then taking it seriously, this year, that we're losing about four percent reduction. Does that count for that, or was that standard across not counting, not counting four percent that's?
That reserve amount, that retirement reserve amount, we spend well, well in excess of that. Our expenditures far exceed seven hundred thousand dollars a year, so I only appropriated seven hundred thousand to balance.
And Mike, to to your question, I'm gonna guess, not not seeing it, because of that jump, we we balance, we we put up a little bit more in the ERS this year from our reserves, so so the, so the ERS is paid for both out of the the general budget and out of the reserve, because that one jumped. I'm not looking at it, but I'm gonna guess that we put more from both to get there.
Like, definitely budgeted more, there's more in the budget, you know, I appropriated last year, but
But wasn't that the fund that actually was from sixteen to eleven this year?
No, TRS was the one that went down, ERS went up.
There's the, the TRS rate went up.
I thought it dropped four percent.
I'm sorry, ERS, right.
You're right.
Yeah, the problem is, though, is the ERS dropping that much sometimes doesn't counteract a little bit of increase in the TRS because of, you know, when you multiply the percentages there.
And that paywall cost. So that percentage of even though the rate goes out, doesn't always mean the expense goes out.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, so numbers.
Well, you know, I know that the school district costs go up, I I fully understand, yeah. And I don't want to put us in a bad spot, but I also know for the last ten or eleven years, every time we ask our residents, they've always said, yes, 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 on the budget. They were pretty good with some high raises, now I think we've been somewhat on a conservative side the last five years, the numbers prove that out. But with what's going on with inflation, which is also affecting the school district, but it's also affecting our residents. If there's ever a year to get below two, whatever that number is, if there's ever a year with the increase of the foundation aid, that's only gonna be here for this year and maybe next, then whatever, whatever we're using this federal money for, I would like to get it somewhere below two, where I would be more comfortable to try to justify helping the district. Maybe not as much as they want, but the unconscious of the residents.
Okay, anyone else?
I think we should lower it, I don't know, I understand what you're saying, Rick, but I think we should lower. That's why I was asking about the numbers, how much we're, we have actually dropped, it's four hundred, so if you drop it to two, it's two half of what we appropriations that from last year. The question comes down to is, the money that we got for the nine hundred and eighty-nine, I think it was, on two years, what is it gonna be? The question, right? So if we're reducing our fund balances, we gotta be careful that we don't go too deep and then find out that we're gonna be paying later on, that's that's my concern. But somewhere around, around the two, with where I.
You know, and I don't disagree with you, uh, well, you you look at, at what a voter looks at. You're talking three thousand dollars difference between two and one point nine nine, okay? Then one point nine nine to a voting resident sounds a lot better than two, even though it doesn't mean nothing else. And that's sort of the reason why I said below two, you know, but I don't disagree with that.
And I, and I agree with Rick, I mean, I think that that's something under a two percent, you know, and I I you know, I toyed around with one point nine to one point nine nine, somewhere in there.
Definitely want to make sure.
Yes, but yeah.
It's just the question comes down to, we wanna make sure we don't put ourselves.
Oh, right, because I mean, you know, you think, you cut two hundred thousand off, the the income coming in from that, that's four hundred thousand the next year.
Right.
You know, that you you don't have to play with, and, you know, six hundred thousand the following year after, because it's just, you're compounding that each year with the amount of money not coming in, so we don't.
True, right, one, one point nine. Not much more.
I see, Allison, I related to one point eight nine, that was, that was the slide, that was.
How about one point nine nine and nine tenths?
One point nine nine nine?
One point nine nine and nine tenths.
Our average was one, one point six.
Well, six, seven.
And you know, over five years, we're having six hundred employees and teaching four thousand kids with five and six buildings. To have it under two is really, towns don't usually have it like that, but outlets are doing to compare to a school district, so. I mean, we get more state aid and stuff like that, but it's a pretty conservative number for what the school district does, in my opinion.
Yeah, I certainly want to.
So give me a number.
I'd go one seven five.
All right, who else?
I'm I'm looking one point nine nine, as as Rick said, the difference between the two and the one point nine nine, roughly three thousand dollars. When you drop down to one point seven five, you're at eighty-three thousand dollars, you're almost a third of where you started from. So we went from eight, eight ninety-three down to that after, I'm saying about a third of that way, which I think is a lot. Sorry, what I say. Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm looking at one point nine nine, I'm just thinking one point seven five, a little, digging a little deep.
Michael?
Yeah, initially, I was at one seven five, but thinking about long-term, the effect of that will fully impact.
Well, then I would like, I'll make the motion then to set a tax levy at one point nine nine. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Bob, any further discussion of that item? All those in favor then accepting one point nine nine, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, carries, one nine nine. And nine tenths.
Ex- expenditure.
Yeah, you have.
Yeah, the number, could you just move back to the to the expenditure budget, the the total, because that just needs to be acted on.
Could you give us an average right now, just curious, what their one nine nine reaches at?
I know Allison can.
What's that?
What's the average of one nine nine, the last five? Just curious.
So if you add it to the current five?
Yeah.
So then that's easy, one, six, seven times five, plus one point nine nine, divided by six.
I think that's voodoo economics.
What is it? Okay, got it.
Can you go back to the?
No.
The one.
Revenue one, the one you're right, we're sure it's the same.
The the other way, sorry, Dan, keep going.
I I call for motion then to accept a revenue expenditure budget of seventy-nine, uh, seventy-nine million, eight hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Is there a second? It's seconded, any further discussion of that item? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Someone read the number for Jan, she's squinting. There's a third now, she's Monday to.
You got one more.
Um, what's the last one? Oh, yeah, I mean, we gotta go through the other, so, any items for board discussion then? I just have a question in going with it, when, there's a Facebook post out there about our fields. Can you find out, because why are we not playing if we aren't at least JV and varsity back to back under, on turf?
They could absolutely be doing that, so I don't know if it's, so you shared with me the 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 post, I'll look into it, I don't know. There's not, there's not a reason I can think of, so we'll find out.
Which part are you talking about specifically, baseball and softball?
Baseball, softball.
What I, some knowledge that I have that if the JV game runs beyond the start time of the varsity game, it impacts the officials who are waiting, which becomes a form X where they can charge more because they're waiting, it's pushed the games back a little bit further. And it's come to the point where to stop a JV contest, because the time's up. Ten, ten game, to stop the contest, because varsity's scheduled to start at seven o'clock, so that's something maybe.
Something for all of us to talk about, talk about that.
Yes, and why, so why, when scheduling, would you not set the, start the varsity well after that, I mean, I just.
Bigger gap.
Some of some of, the bigger gap, some of the teams getting back late, transportation coming back at eleven o'clock. Because they play a varsity under the lights, was some of the discussion I heard.
Okay, oh, we'll follow up, we'll, 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 we'll get an answer.
Because I mean, we have, that's the whole point of us having lights and putting the fields there, we're not just for varsity.
And it's worked for, it's worked for the seasons before.
And it worked for other districts.
Sure, yeah, and some don't have it at all.
Right.
So what happens if it goes over, can't they just push it out?
Well, I mean, the format, what, you get paid the extra hour, whatever. Is what the contractor is.
It's a lot.
But it can't be that significant.
Can't be that significant.
Even if it's fifty bucks in the official.
And just create, just create a little more of a gap.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll find out, I'll, I'll send something out to you too.
You might want to contact that parent also about the concerns that he has about the fields not being worked on. Get some bony paper towels and try and help.
Well, you know, one of one of the things I asked him up to Steve just mentioned, just because you said, um, remember, you know, some of these fields, it's been a lot. It's been really a lot, so, so that does the benefit of having the turf. You get out there on the fields, and you know, you start taking equipment out there, you end up putting ruts and, you know, that sort of thing in the field, that's the reason we have the turf, to your initial point.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, any old business? All right, new business, we have two items. One, I'm just gonna do before I get into the weapons detection, that I call for motion that be resolved with the Board of Education. Have, and I'll give this to you, so you have to write this down. Having considered the appeal dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and received March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, of the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two written Um, having considered the appeal dated March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two, and received March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two, of the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty two written decision of Superintendent Schools. Uh, the board hereby sustains that decision and denies the appeal, um, is there a second for that? And that's a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. All right, weapons detection system. I have to call for a motion that be it resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent, that the Board of Education approves a weapon detection system, I'll make that motion, is there a second? Second by Bob, any further discussion of that item? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. All right, um, Tracy, anything to say? Uh, board member comments? All right then, um. Oh, she's gonna be faster.
I just wanna congratulate all the students, teachers, staff, for the Adams family. Uh, it was a wonderful play, good musical, and uh, I received a call from a resident just last week. Uh, who goes to our adult education class. I don't know what class she didn't indicate, but she was impressed of how clean the school was. She couldn't keep on bragging to me about what a wonderful job, it's clean, she was really impressed, so. I want to thank Greg and all his staff for doing whatever they're doing to keep our schools clean, thank you. Just because I got, I heard that same thing through community ad, and they, then, community, community coordinator passed that on to to Greg and to to, so he can forward it to the staff, so. No, but that's, that's really nice that you heard it too.
I I just have to say, I mean, the the musical, I'll piggyback on Rick's here, was phenomenal. Um, they say, out of the three of us, Tom probably had the best looking forearms when he, he, you know, put his arm out there, he was flexing to show it off. Um, Dan got the least photogenic arm award, I guess, from it, so. It's, it was good that we had, I had the, actually the most creative, because I actually did something with it more than just sticking my arm out. Yeah.
I followed this, I followed the script, okay, it was the first time anybody ever let me be in a musical, so I did exactly what they said to do.
That's not right, you were dancing in the previous year's musical.
Let's move on. I was there with Sherry, she goes, where's the hand? I said, they gotta wheel them out somehow, I think it was coming in the box.
In a box.
Sherry says, they were lying to you. And I guess it was in the very beginning.
Yeah, we had to handle ukulele out to uh, to Uncle Fester, and they just handed the ukulele out, and I handed out Baby Yoda, a few notes from fans, fan mail. It was a good time. So, all right, um.
Well, just want to relay that, uh, for our winter athletes, coaches and teams, uh, that Niagara Weet Field again won the supremacy for the winter season. So they have to follow the winter, uh, sizable lead going into the spring, so hopefully this supremacy trophy for the league will sit over here at Niagara Weet Field this year, but. Will to be continued, so that good season, great season, so, uh, well, well deserved accolades for all the teams and athletes.
Excellent.
Can I make one more comment, even though it's not super technical comments?
That's fine.
Members in in the audience, and and earlier I had the opportunity to thank all of the first responders who took part in our March eighteenth activity. And I was just talking to the board, how impressed I am with the care that your department, the other departments, um, give to our district all the time, so. Though we actually had a situation today where you were showing that same kind of care, so, thank you.
All right, any other comments then? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moving seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries, we are adjourned.